Now we'll go into our next item, please.
Trustees Lane and Mead recognition.
Okay, so normally we would be in a situation where we would be recognizing our trustees in person. Two things, we'd have a reception at the ASC Central Office Building prior to the board meeting. And then we would be recognizing them formally in person. Obviously, that was not possible this year with the COVID situation. As we're being responsible, but we still want to recognize the great work by our two trustees. Lane and Mead who are leaving the board. So we did it a little differently this year and I'm going to have some comments. But before I do, we do want to share a little video that David and his team put together from that recognition.
Important thing that we do as a board is to make sure that we have a strategic plan. But all these action points are as a result of goals that everybody has established, right? And then there is some person responsible for making sure those goals are accomplished.
I think governance works best when people are active and involved in their government. So I appreciate the people that came here. I would welcome you at any time. I feel it keeps us on our best, on our toes.
We're supposed to be responsible for developing the vision, the mission, the values and the strategic plan. And all of the long term and specific goals have to be developed and approved by the board. Having a strategic plan is really critical for the board because then we can back away and let the administration and the staff and faculty implement this strategic plan.
Dr. Mead, as you leave the board this year after six years of serving and many more years serving as administrator at the college. I want to thank you for your advocacy for students, for the advancement of academic standards at both the college and the P-12, your leadership with the strategic plan. You really understood when I was superintendent, your role as far as the fact that you allowed the administrators to do their work and you provided guidance, were involved with the budget and the big picture. So I just want to say, thank you so much for all of your hard work, your dedication and the positive impact you've had on so many students.
Trustee, doctor, vice president, interim president, Mead. It's a heartwarming opportunity for me to say congratulations to you. You have been at this college for 40 years and you've made such an impact.
Congratulations and thank you, Dr. Mead, for all you did for Dearborn Public Schools students. You pushed us with the strategic plan to make it measurable so that we could track our progress. And it was a living, breathing document and I thank you for that.
Hello, Dr. Mead. I wanted to express my heartfelt and most sincere congratulations to you for retiring. And also extend my sincere appreciation for you for serving on our community board and helping our students with the most important decisions as it relates to our schools.
Hi, Dr. Mead. Thank you so much for all of your service to Dearborn Public Schools. You were a great board member and I hope you had fun. I learned a lot from you. I wish you and your family all of the best during your well-deserved retirement. Thank you.
Trustee Lane, do you have any comments?
Not always, no, no.
I know, I was just anticipating, that's all.
To Mary Lane, I want to thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Going back so many years in the school district, all the work that you've done really means a lot to me. Means a lot to so many, I can say thousands, you know, tens if not hundreds of thousands of students. And then tens of thousands of staff members that you've had a positive impact in your 20-year history on the Board of Education. You will be missed, but I know you'll be around and I know you'll be there supporting and advocating for Dearborn Public Schools, for public education and the betterment of society for our future generations and our students.
Congratulations, trustee Lane, on a fantastic career of service here at Henry Ford College. We are so proud to have called you our colleague and one of our leaders for decades. In those times, you've served our community, you've helped students and staff by the thousands. And you even got the opportunity to mentor a new president. And I can tell you personally, that was a good part and an important part of my tenure at the college.
Hello, Ms. Mary Lane. Thank you so much for your nearly two decades of service to the students and staff in Dearborn Public Schools. I am going to miss all of your attention to detail and your very specific questions regarding all issues of importance related to the welfare of students and for the benefits of staff.
Really what you've done over the years is immeasurable. I, behalf of my children, my community and myself as an employee in Dearborn Public Schools, I've seen nothing but extreme effort to help our students and community. And for that, we are forever grateful. I am sad that you are leaving the board and I wish you the best as you move on with your life. And I thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for all that you've done for us in the district.
You humbled me by your passion for students and your willingness to put that passion out there and wear your heart on your sleeve sometimes during board meetings. But I think the favorite memory I'll keep in my mind and heart is the pride on your face at every single graduation. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you did for my children who were Dearborn Public School students and all of the children at Dearborn Public Schools. Enjoy your retirement. Well deserved.
Yes, now, everybody ready?
Okay, that being all the business we're going to conduct tonight, last call, we are adjourned.
Okay, so we also, there is going to be a longer version of the video that will come out as well. And part of it was, as the trustees are aware from last Wednesday, what did we do? We, it's the COVID situation, so we have some video on that as well that we're going to share with trustees and I think I've shared some of it. And I know we're putting together a long version. Myself and Joan Harris were talking and David and President Cavallone and I talked to President Barry. And really, I appreciate President Barry's idea. We did, we decided, he did, he, it was his idea and we worked on it together. And it was a drive-by ceremony that we had this past week. And so we were able to go in a socially distant COVID manner and recognize in lieu of the reception. And so I appreciate everyone who was able to be there and if you weren't, I know you were there in spirit. I do want to make a few other comments. Both Dr. Mead and trustee Lane, trustee Dr. Mead and Dr., excuse me, Ms. Lane. You know, I worked with you both as board presidents, Mary twice you had. I've learned so much from both of you in different areas and I did mention it in some of the comments. But I think you both did a pretty good job in 2015. You both sat on the, on the board that hired me. So hey, you know, I am appreciative of that, but I'll just kind of say, hey, I think you. You also helped me personally as well in maybe a connection to my family. And you both have talked about how you remember in 15 when, you know, the second meeting and Dr. Willmont said it was okay. I had my entire family there. And so you kind of know my kids when they were younger. And so Mary Lane, you know, you helped me, or you helped my wife convince me for that Europe trip about a year and a half ago. And then you gave me a whole agenda for it and all the information. So you're just a, someone that always wants to help. And so, you know, my family, you know, we're all family and I appreciate, you know, all the trustees. And then Dr. Mead, you know, you went with me to the, you know, the national conference when I was recognized for being the superintendent of the year, which really belongs to the whole district and all of you. And so that was a nice memory for me and my family was there and they had to go. So you're two very quality people. And since I've already made some comments, are, we, a lot of us have other comments that are on that video. But I want to kind of give a couple of more things that I'd like to read. Former superintendent, and so this is from Mary. I do have some comments from Dr. Artis who we sent in. And he sent them in. And so I'm just going to read it. And then basically it said during the month of May 2002, Mary Lane. And for those of you who didn't recall or you know Dr. Artis, he was here from 2002 to think about 2008. So as superintendent for Dearborn Schools, he hired me as the principal over at Salina. So anyway, he recalls coming to visit with you. You came to visit him in Upper Arlington Public Schools, Arlington, Ohio. You carried back to Dearborn Public Schools of Education support when he was assistant superintendent then. And you supported his selection. He basically stated that you served as a board member for the Dearborn Public Schools. He knows for the six years that he served as superintendent. As a board member, he states that you were always thoughtful, inquisitive and always dedicated to doing what was best for all the students in the district. When you did call, it was about critical issues and educational issues. He knows that your interests were broad with a deep knowledge of curriculum concern, critical leadership expectations. He stated that you represented all the students and parents of the school district. You cared deeply about what was happening with students on all ends of the city and all areas of the city. During his tenure with you, he appreciated your sage advice and counsel and wanted to know your opinions regarding all matters. He truly wishes you all the best as you leave the Board of Education. So that was from Dr. Artis, who I did reach out to. And if, if I could, I'm going to just say for both you and Dr. Mead, I know you both served under previous superintendent, Brian Weston, and are you, actually, he served for you and you worked with him together. And he, I can tell you what he would say because he spoke so highly of both of you to me. And he knew that you were staunch advocates for education. And so, you know, Superintendent Weston, who had passed away a couple of years ago. If he was here, you would also both be getting the positive comments for the, for the service that you provided to the students in the district. So just in closing for me, I just want to, you know, thank both of you. On behalf of the entire school district, our administration, our students, our staff. Thank you for serving the board and we will miss you and we've learned from you and we appreciate your support and all that you've done for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. I'm just going to add a couple of quick comments here to Dr. Mead. Thank you for your service. It was an amazing experience for me to serve with a colleague who was so knowledgeable about the curriculum, processes and institution we call Henry Ford College. Sir, I learned so much from you. For that, I personally thank you. Again, thank you for your service on the board and for your service to the thousands of Henry Ford College former students. Mary Lane, what could I say? It's an honor to work with you and to learn from you. I will not forget your mentorship. The first couple of years I was on the board, on the board. I believe you were this, I believe we were on the same page most of the time during my 10 years I served as your colleague. I always admired your unwavering passion, your fairness, your attention to details and your well-thought-out comments during our meetings. So thank you for your service to Dearborn for so many years. Thank you both and we appreciate you. Anybody else? Mary, then go ahead. Trustee Lane?
I would like to say something. This is my last meeting in 20 years. I told Dr. Maleko, I'm going to have to start watching Monday night football. And now that I'm ready, it's defunct. So I'm going to have to find something to do on Monday nights. But as Dr. Mike Mead and I become board members emeritus, I want you to call on us as public ambassadors. I did talk to him earlier. And I know he was struggling with his decision to. For weeks or months now, I've been saying this is my last board meeting. And some, I waver between elation over not having to have 40 tabs open and reading and reading and reading stuff to sorrow to leave something that's been a singular honor in my life. So I, I can't do that without saying that I, I have to give my thanks to the voters of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. They elected me and not only that, they re-elected me five times. So it's, it's a real honor that they did that. I always felt that this was an immense responsibility to the steward, our public funds and our children. There's, there's just nothing more honorable. So I would like to also thank a couple of people. I never imagined that I would run for public office. It was just never, never anything that I imagined doing. I always thought that was someone else. But Abed Hamud and Osama Siblani told me, you need to run. You need to change what's going on with the board. I thought the board was stodgy. I told Pam Adams that. I gave a public interview. And Pam, Pam stung from that for a long time, but the board has flourished. Dearborn Schools have flourished. I'm so proud of that. I'm so honored to have been just a small part of that. The college has flourished and the evidence is in our statistics. And every day, it's a miracle that thousands of people and thousands of children come to school. They learn and they become better for it. When you think of how many things can go wrong, it's, it's honestly, it's a daily miracle. So I'd like to thank the board members passed also who taught me so many things. Pam Adams was one, Daryl Donaldson, Jim Schoolmaster. I mean, there were so many people who's Hussein, Mary, Roxanne, board members present. You've been so good to me. And then my real homegirls, Amy Shellis, Miriam Bazey, Badua Hamud. I have learned so much from all of them. And most of us are still friends. I mean, I'm friends with, with almost all of them. So I really appreciate that. I'd like to also thank, or I'd like to give a word of advice for board members' future and just warn them that you got, you're in for a heavy lift. Mr. Dambrojo, Ms. Watts, Rusty Moses, if you already know, this is an awesome job. You're making decisions over millions of dollars and, and the fundamental right for a student to be educated. I know that the people have chosen you with good reason. Sometimes the democracy doesn't work, but I think in this case it did. You're all going to be good board members. I just know that you've got a lot of reading to do. Dr. Mead and I were just talking today about how much work it is. It, you can never be educated enough. We can never get enough information. But I hope that everyone will look at the wild, wide world around them and, and learn from other people. And then take advantage of conversation with your present board members who have also a wealth of information about things that we've done, what we've already tried. We have coffee together frequently with the superintendent and with the president. So those things are all really good ways that the future board members will honor the board and make good decisions for all of us. And, and you're entrusted with, with really heavy responsibilities. So please do your best. I know you will. So I just would like to also thank all of the students over the years. It's been, it's fantastic to meet so many of them. I live in awe of their accomplishments and I know that the world is being left in good hands. So, thank you.
Dr. Mead?
Thanks a lot for, for these accolades. Appreciate it. Mary, unbelievable 20 years of service on the board. Take my hat off to you. But I would like to also thank the voters for giving me the opportunity to serve on the board. And particularly, I like to thank the superintendent, Dr. Maleko. Because when I was the chief or whatever you call it, the president of the board, I was really worried about it because I don't have much experience with the P through 12. And I thought, I don't think I'm going to be able to do that job. And he said, don't worry, I got your back. I'll take care of it. So a lot of times I had to refer to him to resolve issues because I didn't understand the issues very much. And I appreciate that the board members allowed me to serve when my background is really in the community college. And you can tell that I really am very cognizant of what's going on at the college and that's my major interest. And I always thought that out of seven board members, we ought to have at least one that is very interested in the college. I'd like to thank the executive directors, Dr. Chilkokel, Ms. Shannon Peterson, Ms. Fatmi Faraj, Mr. Tom Wall, Ms. Mason Ali Bazey, Mr. David Mustaman. Really, I couldn't, couldn't serve well as a board member without all of your assistance. And I appreciate your leadership of the people that report to you. Because ultimately, that's how those people, a lot of the ones that get the education done in the classrooms. So I'd like to make a recommendation to new board members. There's only one here now, Pat. But I would like to recommend that you seriously consider taking the Michigan Association of School Boards number one class. I never remember. It's like college 101. But it's, it's a class for board members to orient them about what is their role. And trustee Petlicoff would know that when I started, I did not understand my role at all. I was coming from administration and the administration's very much different from the Board of Trustees. There's only one, you only have one vote on the board. It's really a majority vote that makes the difference. All the discussion that goes on and then there is a majority vote. And you may not get what you want, but it is the wisdom of the group. So that's the first issue that they bring up in this course. But they also say that your most important job is the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent and the president of the college. And I think I can publicly say that I have such tremendous faith in Dr. Maleko and in Mr. Russell Cavalluna Esquire. I, it's young leadership, it's vibrant leadership, it's comprehensive leadership. It's not authoritarian like some people we know running this country. It's authoritative. They do involve a lot of people in the discussion. They know they have to make the final decision, but they include and incorporate people. And so it's very important that the board members hire well. And I think this board hired very well for those two positions. Board members also have to approve the strategic plan. And the strategic plan is the vision, the mission and the goals that the board agrees to. These are, this is the map that the superintendent and his staff implement. So this, putting your best thinking into the strategic plan is really very important. Because not only does that give direction to the district, but it also provides the board with an, with the information to evaluate the superintendent and the president. Another item in that class is the board members are responsible for the financial sustainability of the district and the, and the college and at the budget. And when they look at the budget, does the budget support the strategic plan? And lastly, in this course, they say board members approve and develop, along with the administration, policies that support the proper function, the proper functioning of the district and the implementation of the strategic plan. So my encouragement to new people is, please take that course. I wish I would have when I first started because I wouldn't have made mistakes like I thought. As a board member, I would have a right to go and tell people what to do. No. But as a board member, we work together as a team and we take majority, we, we act on majority votes. So good luck to the new people and for all of you that I've served with, thank you so much. It was really, truly a pleasure to work with all of you. This is a good board and it will lead the district and the college well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mead, for the advice.
You're welcome.
Again, thank you very much, Mary Lane and Dr. Mead. We appreciate your service to Dearborn and Dearborn community. Trustee Lane, you're still here for this meeting. So next item, please.
Next item is commendations.
So I'm going to take on the commendations today. We only have a few this month. Commendations to Eternal Light, a nonprofit organization. And to the founder Sam Bazey, who provided food to thousands of families in the Dearborn community. Dr. Rola Bazey Gates, our special education coordinator, organized and coordinating two food distribution events in the district. The first one in October was at ASC. The second one was at the Ford Community and Performing Arts Center in November and fed 4,500 families. Special thanks to all students, school social workers, administrators who volunteered. Commentations to Anthony Satter, the Etzel Ford English language, EL science teacher, excuse me, English language learner, science teacher, was named to the Detroit Lions champion of the game for going above and beyond for his students. He will be recognized during the Lions versus Minnesota Vikings game on January 3rd. Congratulations to Michelle Jawad on your appointment to the Board of Directors. She is a psychologist in our district of the Wayne County Integrated Health Network. Thank you for your commitment to our students and your leadership in our district and beyond. And again, I've already mentioned it, but I just think it fitting to give commendations to all of our employees in the district that have really worked hard with our board, to our students, just to everyone for sticking together and getting through this most difficult time in our lives. Thank you.
I have one trust, President Barry.
Trustee Lane?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Maleko. I, I don't even know. I mean, I don't even know what I've said. I don't know if I thanked you and, and the staff, but I should. I do have to mention one former staff member. Not only for the, I loved my own parade. It's the first time I've ever had a parade. But also for, for the everyday, I always like to say that every day is a miracle. And, and that's our staff from the top, from Dr. Maleko and Mr. Cavalluna, all the way down to the custodians, the lunch ladies, anybody serving. It's, you really deserve a lot of thanks. Anyways, today I did become aware of one staff member who, a former staff member who's being honored in, I think next spring in the, as a top leader in education. And that's Dr. Don Ball. So he's receiving an award. People flourish even when they leave Dearborn Schools, which I'm very happy of. And Dr. Ball gave me a Coast Guard salute and said, fair winds and following seas. So with that being said, I appreciate that, that parting bit of wisdom. I'd just like to remind the district and the college. Some of the past trustees have asked to get some emails to have us continue to be on some email lists for you so that we can continue to work as public ambassadors for public education. I would like to, I know former trustee Jerry Stockwell wanted to be aware of what was going on at the college. So I hope that any of the present and future board members will call on me whenever they need. I stand by you and the honorable service that you give.
Trustee McDonald?
I was actually just scratching my head, but I did want to say thank you. It's been quite a pleasure and an honor working with both of you. Mary, I have learned so much from you over the years. And you always challenged my, my thinking. You gave me different perspectives on things, so I appreciate that. And I have to admit that I occasionally had to look up a word that you threw out there. So I appreciate you expanding my vocabulary as well. And Dr. Mead, thank you. It's been an honor serving with you as well. Both of you, I wish you all the best and I will, without a doubt, contact you in the future when I have questions or I just want to pick your brain because you have lovely brains. when I have questions or I just want to pick your brain because you have lovely brains to pick.
Thank you. There's nothing other, maybe also on the commendations. We'll go on to the next item.
Acknowledgement of donations.
So we have David who's gonna come in for that one.
Hello there, everybody. Um thank you very much. And as Dr. Malaico mentioned, uh I just wanted to put into scope a little bit. Um there's well over an hour of video that is in that final tribute video to the uh board trustees. Many people who sent in video uh tributes were not part of just that. That was just the highlights. That was only the highlights, uh as Dr. Malaico mentioned. Um both of you will receive the full version uh and it's that you can share with your families um at a later date. But uh yeah, there were many, many people uh who sent in videos and tributes and photos and all kinds of wonderful things. And we will share that with you uh when we have that all together.
Thank you.
Um many donations. So get right to it. Henry Ford Elementary School will receive a donation of a thousand dollars to be used for alphabet trays and young fives in kindergarten and a donation of a hundred and twenty dollars to be used for uh vocabulary visual learners. The donation is made, being made possible by the Dearborn Education Foundation. And while we're talking about the foundation, let's just get right to all of those donations. A donation of three hundred dollars has been offered to Smith Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a color printer for ASD students. A donation of four thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for internet services. A donation of one thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars has been offered to Michael Berry School by the Education Foundation to be used to support their virtual reality career fair. A donation of three hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-eight cents has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Education Foundation to be used for the Monster Mile. I know donation of two hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-four cents has been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by the Education Foundation be to be used for the battle against hunger. A donation of twenty-two thousand dollars has been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by the Education Foundation, once again, to be used against uh used for uh Eureka Math. A donation of five hundred and ninety dollars has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Education Foundation to be used for first grade early literacy. A donation of eight hundred and sixty dollars has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Education Foundation to be used for Robotica. And a donation of two hundred and fifty dollars has been offered to River Oaks Elementary School by the Education Foundation to be used for literacy. A donation of one thousand two hundred K ninety-five mask has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Mr. Sam Bazey of Eternal Light Organization uh to be distributed to special education staff. A donation of three hundred and four dollars has been offered to Selina Elementary School by Jessica uh Phil Phil Bacorn of Lularoe Company to be used for scholastic books, for supplies, for Lindsay Dexter's classroom. A donation of art supplies, easels, office furniture, monitors, a refrigerator and a microwave have been offered to the Dearborn Public Schools by GTB Advertising Agency to be used throughout the district. And finally, a donation of expertise, knowledge, compassion, and dedication has been made to the students and staff in the Dearborn Public Schools by trustee Mary Lane and trustee Michael Mead. Trustee Lane has made this donation for over twenty years and trustee Mead for six. Thank you both for this very kind and very much appreciated, priceless donation. It has been an honor and a privilege to work with both of you. Thank you.
You should be an actor.
President Barry, if I could make a comment on the dona- thank you. Um uh first of all, great uh outfit there, David. He knew he he got extra attention for it too. So it was extra uh meaning coming from that. Uh and I also just want to mention, you know, we have a lot of generous people in the community that are doing a lot of good things. Um we had a a meeting this week with the Community and Schools Program and and that coordinates a lot of food and things. Um you know, uh they have, they work in our schools and they work within the community. There's a lot of great agencies that have worked together and I can't even start to name them, but I've seen that throughout uh Dearborn, especially during this time. And I can tell you, um you know, whether that be Exchange Club Rotary, uh Kiwanis, uh Goodfellas, they're all stepping up and we have lots of things that are going in that maybe don't go directly to the schools, but go to our families and our community. So it's wonderful that that is happening. I also want to mention on item fourteen, thank you to uh trustee Thorpe um and his wife Carrie for uh really helping to facilitate. There was a lot of good furniture uh that'll be valuable for our district, for administration, for our students. So thank you as well for facilitating that uh donation. And so again, thank you, you know, to all the community for the 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 um the warmth out there and including students. They continue to do fundraising throughout throughout the district. Thank you, President Barry.
Next item, please.
Arrival of minutes of the following Dearborn Board of Education meetings. Finance Committee meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty, Board Report twenty hyphen thirty-nine. Regular P twelve meeting, November ninth, twenty twenty, Board Report twenty hyphen forty.
So moved.
Again.
We have a motion offered by trustee McDonald, supported by uh Dr. Mead. Are there some corrections or questions pertaining to the minutes? Hearing non and seeing non, Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ambrosio.
Yes.
Lane, yes. McDonald.
Yes.
Mead.
Yes.
Thorpe.
Yes.
Petlicoff.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes, thank you. The motion is adopted by unanimous vote. Madam Secretary, next item, please.
Special reports, P twelve audit report, Dr. Glenn Malaico, Mr. Thomas Wall.
Believe Tom will be entering here.
All right, I'm in. So today we have our uh annual audit presentation required by state law. We are required to do an annual audit where we have an independent accounting firm come in and do the audit and give a presentation to the board for acceptance. So today we have Jeff Higgins and Tom Marquisi that will be doing the audit presentation.
All right. Well, thank you, Tom, and good evening, everybody. Appreciate a couple minutes of your time tonight. We're here to talk about the audit results for the uh district's audit for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. You'll notice this year that there's actually two reports that you've received with um with your your finance or your packets tonight. So there's the financial report with supplemental information, which contains the district's audit financial statements and the report to the Board of Education, which provides information on the audit process and results. Now ultimately, there will be a third report that will be issued, which is our separate report on the um our audit of the federal programs administered by the district. However, the Federal Office of Management and Budget is still in the process of finalizing the regulations on some of the new federal programs that were established under the various coronavirus relief bills. And until those uh regulations are finalized, we're not able to finalize our audit for those programs. So once that audit or those regulations are finally released, start, that third report will be issued shortly thereafter. But with that, we will uh get into our presentation. I believe Tom is gonna be able to share his screen and show our slides. Is that correct?
It looks like it. Um I'm just pulling it up now.
While he's pulling that up, I will just uh start off by briefly stating that remember that the financial statements include uh the P twelve school district, the Henry Ford College, and the Henry Ford College Foundation. So as the district's auditors, it's our responsibility to express an opinion on both the amounts and the disclosures in the financial statements based on our audit conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted United States of America and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. So I'm happy to report here tonight, as we can see that based on the results of our various audit procedures, we rendered what's called an unmodified or a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. This would represent the highest level of assurance that we as auditors can provide on a set of financial statements. In addition, our audit identified no what are called material weaknesses or internal control items. Uh again, none of those were identified and no material noncompliance noted. So again, overall, a a clean audit report. The presentation tonight will focus on the P twelve, obviously, uh and the general fund of the P twelve. As a general fund is the primary operating fund of the district and where most of the activity takes place. So with that, we'll get into some of the highlights and I will turn it over to Tom.
Thanks, Tom. I'm sorry. Thanks, Jeff. I was looking at Tom. I so slide two just provides a breakout of general fund assets and liabilities. At June thirtieth, twenty twenty, total assets were six seventy-six million dollars while liabilities were forty million dollars at year end. Cash of thirteen million and investments of twenty-eight million represents fifty-four percent of total assets, receivables at forty percent of total assets. Those are composed of the July and August state aid payments. So moving over to the liabilities, accrued payroll is the largest component that that is contrib- or attributed to the July and August pays owed to teachers and other ten-month employees. So on slide three, there are year-over-year breakouts of general fund revenue. Revenue stayed largely consistent between the years. State source revenue is driven largely by the found day, foundation allowance based on pupil counts. Uh projected state revenue shortfall due to the COVID nineteen pandemic resulted in a one hundred and seventy-five dollar per people cut to the foundation allowance there for the nineteen twenty school year. Uh and state aid reduction of three point six million dollars occurred for the nineteen twenty school year based on that state aid reduction. The local source revenue uh is primarily property taxes. So the next slide provides a breakdown of general fund expenditures by function. Total expenditures decreased by two point five million or one percent year-over-year. The spreads between functions remained consistent year-over-year. Instruction represents sixty-one percent of expenditures and only includes activities dealing directly with teaching of pupils or interaction between teachers and students. Other activities such as counseling, transportation, and maintenance are classified as support services. This slide breaks down the general fund expenditures by object. As illustrated, salaries and fringe benefits represent eighty-eight percent of the district's general fund expenditures, while supplies represent about eleven percent of expenditures. Again, these buckets remain substantially consistent with the two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Here's the history of the general fund operating results, simply stated as revenues in excess of expenditures. The district's added to the fund balance for the past five years. Note, two thousand seventeen is a bit of an outlier, uh as it was favorably impacted by the first year of enhancement fund millage. The twenty twenty fund balance increased two point six million dollars, which added eight percent to the general fund balance from the prior year. This final chart provides a look at the general fund balance levels for the past five years as a percent of expenditures. As mentioned in the prior slide, the fund balance has increased each of the fa- past five years. Uh the fund balance, simply stated, is effectively the assets less liabilities. And it's intended to serve as a measure of financial, financial resources available in the general fund. A healthy fund balance helps pay bills so the ins- instructional program can be carried out without disruption uh from circumstances beyond the district's control, uh such as this year's pandemic. It's comparable to a district savings account or reserve. Uh fund balance is used to measure financial health of districts and sometimes shown as a percent of expenditures, like in this chart. Note the district's general fund balance of thirty-six point two million dollars as a percent of general fund expenditures of two hundred and fifteen million dollars is sixteen point eight one percent at June thirty, twenty twenty, compared to the statewide average of about fourteen percent and the fifteen percent guidelines established by the Michigan School Business Officials. With that, I'll conclude uh the presentation and open it up for questions from the board.
Presentation, are there any questions? Okay. Guess you did a good enough job. There's no questions. Thank you very much, Tom and Jeff. And uh thank you very much for Mr. Thomas Wall and his team. I know what goes on in vaccine something like this. So very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry.
I would certainly echo those sentiments. We, oh, it's Tom saying something.
Jeff, did you want to say something?
I think uh, well, I think Tom's on mute.
Sorry about that. I want to thank Tom and Jeff just because this was a very unusual year. The audit took place in June and in August slash September, and it had to be all done remotely, which means that, you know, our staff had to learn how to communicate all the documents and and scan things up and download through a protected service. So it was a lot of new things we had to learn this year to get the audit done. And I just want to thank them for their patience as we got through it because some people were working from home some of the summer. So it was a really unique circumstance that I haven't dealt with in thirty-five years. I've been doing this sort of thing, that it was new and used and and it went kind of smooth. So I wanted to thank both of them.
Yep, and I would conversely also like to appreciate, you know, appreciate the help of uh Tom and the entire business office. Like you said, it was a unique year this year. I've been doing this for thirty-plus years myself. And let's hope we never have another year like this. But all things considered, again, a very clean audit report. And so again, we do appreciate all the assistance and cooperation of Tom and his team. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just one more thing. I just want to thank uh the two board members, Mary and Dr. Mead, that are leaving. Uh you've been a a good reflection on how good this board is in Dearborn and how you care about everybody so truly and still keep the thumb on the finances and make this district healthy and grow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Trustee Lane, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I would like to. I don't know if this is a question. Um it's like asking uh Tom and Jeff to predict the two Toms and Jeff to predict the future. The fund balance um looks healthy. Um but I just want to throw out a caution. Um it's taken us, I I mean, if we look back just five years, we see that we were way under what was recommended. And I want to remind everyone that as a board, we made it a goal to have a a solid fund balance in case of emergencies. I can remember over the years uh when we'd get a text message, Woodworth's gym has flooded. Uh we don't have this. We have that, one or another emergency. So um we know also as a board that we don't get paid over the summer and yet we have to continue to pay our employees. So for those reasons, we we did follow the advice of the uh Michigan School Officers, the Business School Officers Association. And our and our fund balance looks enviable. Uh but of course, in our closed meeting, um I cautioned, and I know it doesn't fall on deaf ears, that we need to maintain a good fund balance, particularly for next year. We have no idea what the state or the federal revenues will be. But if if they have any um advice on that or if they know of any upcoming changes in the next year financially. That's a question.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess that is an excellent comment. And I would say that the fund balance this year, that is a good point. Keep in mind that if you look where things appeared to be headed back in the May-June timeframe, districts are expecting a, you know, upwards of a six hundred and fifty to seven hundred dollar, you know, per people cut effectively. And so districts had to immediately react to that. And so there were some reactions made on the expenditure side. Unfortunately, the cut ended up needing to be significantly less. And as we, you know, got into the fall timeframe, the state might, they thought they could keep the fund balance stable for this year. But again, the state did have to use a lot of its rainy day fund, if you will, to make that happen. So there still is a lot of uncertainty. Uh you know, we're not out of the woods yet is is clearly the um the message and And depending on how the economy, you know, returns and how tax collections go, you know, there's the sales tax, for example, is a big part of the funding for schools. Um, and they're still going to be important to just continue to watch the state revenue estimating conferences as they take place to get an idea of how the funding for this year is looking and going forward. That is an excellent comment that, you know, they managed to kind of dampen the impact last year, but we're, like I said, certainly not out of the woods at this point.
The other thing I would add is it were very appreciative. If you remember, there was a vote on November of twenty regarding the enhancement village that, that roughly makes three percent of our fund balance, as Tom alluded to in the presentation, that in two thousand seventeen, we banked the first year for our cash flow purposes and then spent money the next year. It's the next year living came in. So our fund balance is three percent higher if we didn't have that foundation, I mean, that enhancement village. So we'd be around thirteen, thirteen percent, which is still good, but not as well as we are. So we made some good decisions early on to make sure that we're doing well financially. And also to the board and administration that are making the tough decisions during budget time to watch that and monitor that and react to it quickly if we need to make some kind of change. I appreciate everybody's help and attention to that issue.
Thank you very much.